This meeting is called for to begin even from on the south of Fletcher, our side prayer to yourselves. Thank you for all joining, a pleasure to be here.
So, my pleasure to be here just to enjoy the life of the United States of America. And to be with all of you, which stands one nation under God, and we live in a world where there's justice for all.
Moving on to the comment, if anybody wishes to speak, they're welcome to comment. Seeing none, we've all said our approval of the minutes, are there any corrections addition to positions to the minutes? Seeing none, we are motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Next question.
We are motion, we are second.
Second.
Our motion is second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us up here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I said, are you in a bit of a conflict?
I have one I made to all the council members during our budget review. I also put here a bunch of packets of the Fletcher Fire and Rescue Department, their financial statement. It's something that we asked for during our budget process, y'all remember? It's early fiscal year of June 30th, 2020, 21, and 2020, so if you review that and utilize this during our budget retreat slash workshop, I'll make it work.
Any other questions to come? Seeing none, we have no items on consent agenda this month, so we'll move on to a presentation from, I don't think we've seen this here, but somebody else. Or the Northside Water Improvement.
Great, yeah. Alright, very good. Well, good evening, my name is Adam Stur, I'm a utilities engineer with the city of Hendersonville Water and Sewer Department. As mentioned, Lee Smith did not join us this evening, send apologies, but we'd like to present a quick update on one of our recent water improvement projects in the area. It's improved the level of water service in Fletcher. Before we do that, go ahead and just give a quick overview of our utility. We serve water and sewer. The water side, we serve about seventy-five thousand people, Henderson County, parts of Alton County. We are the water service provider for parts of Fletcher, most of Fletcher. We have a twelve million gallon per day water treatment facility in Mills River. And we maintain and operate about six hundred eighty-five miles of water pipe. In the sewer side, we have about twenty thousand people that we serve, mostly in the Hendersonville Flat Rock areas. We do not serve the town of Fletcher Sewer, the MSD of Alton County. We operate a four point eight million gallon per day waste water treatment facility. We also maintain about a hundred eighty miles of sewer pipe. Our department is comprised without ADA operational support staff. The Northside Water Improvement.
Excuse me, I, it's not coming up on our display, so you have a hard copy of the PowerPoint in your packet, the supplemental packet, just in case you want to follow along.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry.
Great, well, the purpose of the Fletcher Northside Water Improvement project was to address areas of low pressure in the area, and a fire foot. The areas where we had our low pressure historically was in the northern part, Highway twenty-five near Party and Ingles, nearly the town of Orange. And generally, customers saw about a thirty PSI increase in the area. The project comprised of a new pump station near the intersection of Woodville Drive and Highway twenty-five, entrance of South Chase. A new one point one million gallon water storage tank off of Bourbon Mountain Road. This tank sits at a higher elevation than the old tank, and the old tank was abandoned. So this slide just kind of gives you guys an idea of how water service was improved. So basically, by placing that tank at a higher elevation, we were able to gain pressure in the area. So you can see how customers, based on their elevation, were affected. That's why. So the new tank, in that picture there, you can see our old water storage tank, just to the lower, just to the right below the new one. But it's a new spun glass tank, it's got a steel frame. These glass tanks are low maintenance, they don't require painting. So good for our utility, we standardize on these tanks moving forward. The foundation of this tank was also overdesigned for the current needs and the thought that additional capacity was needed in the future. We can actually raise the elevator, raise the tank taller and gain capacity that way. If needed. Here's a picture, the pump station, there's two one hundred horsepower pumps, as well as backup and water generator onsite. The project was operational, the pump station and tank were operational in December of 2021. There's still a few minor outstanding issues, paving, landscaping, things of that nature that we're expecting to be completed this spring. The total project cost was five point three million dollars, it was funded through a twenty-year low interest loan through the state, NCDQ. So that's all I have on this project, I'll open it up to any particular questions you guys may have on this project or anything else regarding water service.
Just out of curiosity, where was the pump station pretty old?
So that's a good question, actually, so there wasn't a pump station before. So how that tank operated was it was actually about the same elevation as our main reservoir in town. So there was a valve, called a magic valve, that would turn on and off and fill the tank as needed. So we abandoned that valve, and now we have a pump station that can boost the water to that additional elevation. That's a great question.
Any other questions?
Just wanted to say while you're here, for the new council people, if you mean an opportunity to take a tour of their water plant, it's very important. It's a good, yeah, and a good tour.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, anytime, we can come down, make an appointment, we have groups, the school groups, or just the general public, it's a great tour.
You mentioned that everything's finished except our single landscaping, will there be landscaping in the Alton County?
Yes, 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 all that will be highly secured and secured, so I know you can really see it now. But remember, there was a tank there, it was built in the seventies, and it kind of blended in after, you know, this vegetation could take. So hopefully, very soon, it won't be a giant on the scar on the mountain.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Great, yeah, yes.
Next one, all the agenda is the conditional zoning application number twenty-two dash oh one. Eric, who's going to open that public hearing first? We are motion open the public hearing to consider conditional zoning application number twenty-two dash oh one. Salute, you have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us up here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are in the public hearing, does anybody wish to speak for the public hearing? Seeing none, we are motion to close the public hearing.
Salute.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do our motion have a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us up here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are out of the public hearing.
Good evening, everybody. We gave you a very brief introduction and overview of this supplemental that's before you tonight, last month. Marty Kokot from Land Works Engineering is here with us again. Car Spicke, the developer for the project, was not able to be here tonight due to medical situation. Has expressed his great apologies and regrets for not being here, he has given Marty a couple of answers and some questions. But we will not have my representative from the actual developer tonight, so that being said, I can go over, I'll briefly go over my notes and supplemental notes that are in your packets, just a few bullet points, and then turn it over to Marty for his presentation. So again, this application is a conditional zoning application twenty-two dash oh one from Longsholz Partners, L D State. The applicant proposing a multifamily residential development that consists of eighty-seven units on five point four-five acres of land located just off of Hendersonville Road. The addresses for the three parcels being considered are the thirty-one, twenty-two, thirty-eight, six, and thirty-five, six Hendersonville Road. The current zoning of those properties is C one and R two, and the applicant is seeking conditional zoning for that property to Neighborhood Business District, NBD. It will allow this multifamily residential use. So on my supplemental notes, I'm just going to run through a few of these, and I will be able to jump in with questions since I need to interject things, as questions come up and as Marty might not get to in his presentation. I'll touch on the fact that this residential development is part of a larger development that will include a commercial component at the corridor that's not subject to any reasonable consideration tonight because the property is already zoned for commercial. In concert with this application, the planning board has already reviewed and approved the overall design of the project at their meeting a couple months ago. So, but back to the residential portion, but while the area in question tonight is not specifically zoned currently for multifamily, it was included a few years back in the town's Part of Fletcher overlay. Specifically in a precinct named the Town Center Housing East Precinct. This precinct established an area that envisioned up to sixteen units per acre in just a couple of small areas beyond Highway twenty-five corridor. This land may be part of that. So again, they're seeking a district called Neighborhood Business, which allows the sixteen units per acre. So as is the case with just about any big development we review in town, we're generally the first agency to kick off that review process and the zoning end. So if they are approved tonight, the developer and their engineers would go on to complete the full engineered plans and seek approval from other agencies, Studio for Hendersonville for Water, MSD for Sewer, Henderson County for Building, Fire Department for Inlets, Stormwater, and ultimately NCDOT, DOT for driveway permitting. And as you heard last month, and Marty will speak to this, they have had some initial consults with DOT, and Marty can update us on whether they've gotten any new feedback or not on the early end of this review process. But ultimately, our zoning approval is always carries the condition of if they don't meet all other federal, state, local regulations, zoning approval can ultimately be nullified, we've not seen it happen, but I always give that disclaimer, so. Again, I mentioned that the design has already been complying with compliance with the design standards. Residential development includes a clubhouse and pool area with a root trail, a picnic area, and so they're meeting the town's requirement for our article seven requirements for recreation areas. And Marty will get into parking, landscape requirements are being met. And just as, I won't read all these to you, but as part of my supplemental notes, I've generally cut and paste a large section of general requirements that have to be complied with for council review. It's kind of conditioned on approving a conditional zoning application. Things like ingress and egress, provision of off-street parking, it's in standard language. And if it's approved tonight, I would ultimately draft an order stating that, you know, council approved this on such and such state. And I will probably outline what these criteria were being met, because ultimately, the state requires us to basically have a statement of plan consistency as part of any approval such as this. So it's kind of inferred, if you go through the review process, that that's being met, and I will just kind of draft a formal order after the fact, ultimately, the mayor decides, so. I'm going to pause there and introduce Marty Kokot again, and he can come up and do his presentation, and then we'll review that with the questions.
Mayor, members of town council, town manager, and town clerk, and I want to thank you here for introducing me. My name's Marty Kokot, I'm with Land Works Engineering, and I've been engaged by Longsholz Partners to create schematic and conceptual plans for the rezoning of five point four-five acres at the address thirty-one, twenty-two Hendersonville Road. For this proposal before you for rezoning to NBD Neighborhood Business District from R two, which is residential zoning. And there's a small portion of a piece of property that is zone C one, commercial use on that property. The project, as Eric said, consists of eighty-seven proposed multifamily units on the five point four-five acres for a density of sixteen units per acre, which is the allowable density. Again, the plan is relatively conceptual and schematic. In your package, there's a schematic rating plan, there's a conceptual layout plan that shows the parcel that's being rezoned, which you see here highlighted in blue, okay? One of the benefits about this parcel is its separation from residential uses. This is zone commercial upfront, and is currently zone commercial upfront. This blue parcel is the parcel we would like to have rezoned to NBD, okay? And this pink highlighted creek provides a natural separation between the residential components that exist along this Alton Circle and our access to Alton Circle. So that element in the property layout and topography creates some natural buffers off some of the residential areas that are adjacent to this. On the south side of the project, there's an existing multifamily apartment complex presently. Behind the parcel is also multifamily apartment complex, the same one wraps around behind the project, okay? The things, the first thing we did in crafting our plan is we sat down with Eric, and we discussed Part of Fletcher, the commercial zoning upfront. And we discussed our desire to craft a multifamily parcel behind the commercial center. That way, we felt that it would separate it from Hendersonville Road, which is a major five-lane commercial corridor, as you know, okay? Positioning the residential up against multifamily residential is a good use for the project. And then keeping it buffered by natural stream and/or landscape buffers that we show hatched on this plan. And then preserving the existing condition of this area and the wooded condition of this rear corner. And excuse my rudeness, I didn't know that we had the A B system fixed, so I'm still old school with my pointer and my map today, so. And I kind of like doing it this way, because it allows you to point and, you know, and again, it's like a little unfair to folks in the audience that don't get to see it. But again, the presentation's for you, and I'm happy to show them and discuss with them, thanks. Now, the things that always come up in these multifamily developments are the same things. Traffic is one of the things that gets considered. Another thing is safety and fire department access and the ability to turn around what we call an SU thirty vehicle. One of the things I did between my first introductory meeting and this meeting is I had a call and conversation and created a SU thirty turnaround showing how a fire truck could easily turn around in this parking lot and discuss that with Kevin Waldrop, who is the fire marshal in Henderson County, okay? So other components for the fire system is all of the multifamily buildings that we're showing based on regular shape on these would be sprinkled. So there are three-story units in each, three stories in each building, but they won't have fire sprinklers built in and an F T C connection for the fire department to be able to bump up the pressure. Sometimes folks look at those F T Cs and they think, oh, that's a fire hydrant that you connect to. No, it's not to get water, it's to push water into the buildings to sprinkle the different floors when there's a fire, okay? And it only works when they bump up the pressure, it's not like the movie where all of the sprinklers go off and you're standing in the rain, it doesn't work like that. It's only the sprinklers that are activated by heat or a fire that actually get dosed. So sometimes folks think, oh, the sprinklers are going to go off and wet all the floors, well, it doesn't work like that. It only activates where there's actually a fire. And when the fire department rolls in and connects and pumps up the pressure, it actually expands the areas and it dumps a bunch of water on the areas. So safety's important, and having the ability to sprinkle the buildings and turn an emergency vehicle around at the site was one of the things that we felt was important. Other things that were important were trying to tailor the site to fit the grade and utilize that natural buffer and the natural land that's in here, okay? This site is going to be graded, it has to be graded to support those large building footprints. So we've calculated that those areas, and we're trying to limit the amount of disturbed area within the site. Another important thing that always comes up that folks like to talk about is storm drainage and stormwater. So we have impervious area, of course, the parking lots and the building roofs are all impervious. And what that means is when it rains and the water falls on the parking lot, it runs off for a roof, it runs off a lot faster than when it doesn't. When it falls on the grass, it has an opportunity to soak into the ground. Or if it falls in some of the natural areas around creek and on the other side of the creek where the property is, it has that ability to soak in. So one of the things that we employ is stormwater collection and detention and the retreating, depending on the levels of impervious surface. So what that means is we collect the runoff from the parking lot and we treat it for the removal of oils, heavy metals, things like that. And we do that in different methods, and the method that we try to employ is more of what we call infiltration. And what that does is it allows the water to pool underground and infiltrate back into the soil. And as it infiltrates it, those two things, one, the water gets clean, and the other thing it does is recharges the aquifer that is in the ground. So that if people have wells far away or close by, it doesn't deplete a well source for somebody that might use that in their residences to, for drinking water or whatever their use might be. So we try to employ those things, and the important thing about the stormwater detention as opposed to treatment is we collect the water because there's more volume that runs off the site. So we collect that excess volume and we meter the outflow. So we'll have large pipes perhaps under the ground that you don't see that fill up with stormwater and a big rainstorm. And then we meter the outflow by either orifice plates or a weir or a combination. And the way we design stormwater is the existing site today, if it was to rain two inches, a certain percentage of that water will run off the site. In the built condition or constructed condition, the stormwater is constructed to meter the outflow so that it matches or is reduced from the existing condition. So what that means is if you live downstream from this, you don't have to be afraid that, oh, all the water runoff from this site is going to leak and overwhelm my creek and flood my backyard or flood a community downstream because of this development. What it does mean is we meter the outflow to match what it would do in its current state. So that the overall runoff from our site, while it's a larger volume, it leaves the site at the same rate that it used to leave the site before our development was done, okay? Now, we also had preliminary conversations and traffic projections based on this site with the NCDOT. What NCDOT tells me is, Marty, you're too early to submit a traffic study because in our traffic study, as we discussed about a month ago here, it's not just going to be these apartments. It's going to be what we end up with at our commercial site upfront has an impact on traffic and those connections to Hendersonville Road that you see on the plan. Those connections are what DOT has to permit through the driveway permitting process. Now, it is a five-lane corridor, it is limited, there are driveways existing up and down Hendersonville Road. There are traffic signals positioned on one of Alton Circle back here. This side is not signalized, this intersection is not signalized. So one of the things we have to work on on our commercial plan, which is not part of the rezoning, is to work with DOT to make sure our entrances and exits from our site are going to work to satisfy the traffic requirements, the safety requirements, the sidewalk requirements, all of those things that make the entire project work. And we're trying to show two entrances, and we have one coming in this way, and we have one connection here. And we've tried to align those where they make the most sense from an occupancy and user standpoint. And again, this is very conceptual upfront. Again, the commercial is something that's upfront, and we realize we're going to have to work with DOT and potential users and of course, the town of Fletcher to tailor this project and take it through Eric and staff and even back through planning and zoning if the changes are significant enough from what we presented earlier, including what we're doing. And Car indicated to me today on the phone, he was, again, he indicated that we will do what is necessary to satisfy the town with the plan. If we have to go back through, if we made some significant change that we took to Eric and felt was necessary to go back through planning and zoning, and even back through council, if it's a big enough change, we would do that. We also are dedicated to meeting DOT's requirements for the driveway access and working with them. And if they require our traffic impact analysis shows something a little different, then we'll tailor the plan to meet those criteria. We will meet Henderson County standards for stormwater treatment and storm drainage, okay? So, and we're, of course, I had that conversation with the fire marshal, which are really, the big four are always those items. which are really, the big four are always those items. And there's the one other thing that we talked about. And that was affordable housing and how affordable are these apartments going to be? And the hard part, I had the conversation with the owner and I asked him, where are we on those numbers? And his response was, well, Marty, it's awful hard for me to give a rental rate that for a dedicated number of affordable housing units on the project when we don't really know what construction costs are, what it's gonna cost for the buildings. He said, I'm committed to trying to incorporate affordable housing. Okay? Now, what that means exactly, I don't know. But what I did ask him, I said, well, what does that mean as far as rates go? And I know, Ms. Franklin, that you had asked specifically, what are the rates? And he said, well, what we did was looked at what the rates are here, right next door. And again, those rates are, they vary from thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred dollars for a one-bed apartment. Okay? Now, what Carr said, his target was twelve hundred to fourteen hundred dollars for a one-bed. Okay? Fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred for a two-bed. So what he's essentially saying is the rates, Ms. Franklin, would be similar to, I guess, what these apartments are charging. And whether that becomes an affordable product or not or whether we have an opportunity to make certain units more affordable as we develop cost and actual construction documents. What this is, again, it's a schematic plan that shows a rectangular box and it says, oh, we're gonna have eighteen units in each of these buildings and fifteen units in this smaller building. But the mix of units is something we can kind of aim for. The hard part these days, as you all know, costs are changing in the construction industry daily, not just by month or every three months, but daily we're seeing numbers go up, numbers come down, just like you all are experiencing here. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions. And Ms. Franklin, I hope that those numbers that I gave you are, you know, helpful to your thought process in evaluating projects. And again, I'm here to, you know, hand in hand because I thought Carr would be here and be able to, you know, answer these questions. And unfortunately, as you start getting up in age like I am, you know, you appreciate it when, wow, you know, something happens and he can't be here and I'm here instead to do the best I can with what we have. Okay?
Question, comment?
In regards to the asking for rates, I was really just trying to pinpoint, like, if you're using that term workforce development plan, where did you decide to classify and where was that process? Like, I figured that if they were using, if Carr or anybody was using that term, that there was some sort of background as to what gave you an idea of what that would look like. So I appreciate you addressing that. It's probably gonna be in the same range of the seasons. That makes total sense. And I am acutely aware of how expensive everything fits and you want to get in the process.
And I'll just say, I know you've got something to say, Eric. Uh, I reached out to the executive director of the city corporation just so I can understand what workforce development exactly looks like. And I think she's using HUD's definition, but she's saying it's eighty to a hundred percent of area median income for a family in our area, assuming this Henderson County that she referred to. The income for them would be around sixty thousand, one hundred dollars, between sixty thousand, one hundred to ninety thousand, one hundred and twenty. For a two-bedroom apartment, it'd be about one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars to two thousand and twenty-eight dollars. So it sounds like you're, they're on a two-bedroom. I don't know about the one-bedroom.
And I'll just interject something that I remember back from just the initial informal sit-downs with the developer. It was never pitched to us as an affordable development. I think it was always kind of fairly represented. It's gonna be, you know, fair market, you know, housing. I think the term workforce got used in the sense that, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong with that. And, you know, they were, these were largely gonna be one- and two-bedrooms as opposed to the larger three-bedroom apartments, meaning that potentially more working professionals, single working professionals.
More reference to the user.
Exactly. It's not necessarily representing that they were gonna be trying to meet some of those thresholds that Eric was just representing, you know, based on HUD standards.
Yeah, that makes total sense. One-two bedroom being young professionals or younger people that are bringing a lot of family or whatever. Um, I also want to add, on the commercial portion, it's like, what, eleven or twelve buildings? Does Carr think he already has that leased or?
No. And that makes my view, what we did when we were, initially, we were thinking it would be a combination of some rental retail space, you know, shops, stores, restaurants, all of which we crafted sort of a single building thinking, well, we have the ability to combine buildings and create larger spaces should we need to. But at the same time, the way this works is we create this plan with trying to incorporate flexibility where you could take a six-thousand-square-foot building and you bump them together and it becomes a twelve-thousand-square-foot. And they, and you've seen them, and I don't wanna say strip center because that's not really what it is, but, you know, when you drive up and down Hendersonville Road or Long Shoals Road, you see developments similar to this where they can get tenants in and tailor the space to the use. So if it's a restaurant space that wants to come in, a diner, for example, they could tailor the space to make it fit with the kitchen or what have you that the restaurant use would need. The same with, you know, a dress shop or a clothing store. Those kinds of uses from the retail standpoint, it gives you the flexibility. Ultimately, what happens here is folks see a commercial center with residential behind it and they will, they'll have a Realtor that markets the property and different uses will actually contact the Realtor and say, gosh, we have this First Watch. It's a breakfast place that, you know, serves food till two o'clock. And, you know, so they're, this is what we do, this is how our building looks. And then what we do would do in that case, they need twelve thousand square feet. We would come and see Eric and present what their actual prototype is and try to tailor their prototype to meet Town of Fletcher standards on the look, on the rock component that we discussed in planning and zoning extensively. And kind of tailor the plan to make it work for the town, but also for the site. And that's where I get into the, well, you kind of reskin the project. You work with the DOT based on real uses as opposed to, oh, there's a box on the plan that says retail or office and what that use is going to be. So, and that's how the plan will ultimately get developed. The multifamily portion, we sort of have a better idea of what it can be. The retail, commercial component up front, it becomes a, a potential user approaches the developer and says, gosh, I'd like to be in Fletcher. I think that our building could work there. And you tailor the plan to, and recraft it to make it work with that multifamily behind it.
Yeah, I don't think you have enough parking ground for some of the restaurants. You have to have ones that can figure.
And we can talk specifics on what this plan shows as far as parking goes, but I agree with you. And I think we have far too many buildings in front in the commercial and hence not enough parking.
So I can interject one thing too, again, because we operate kind of like this is, basically, the commercial portion is the conceptual master plan at this point. So when Planning Board did their review and approval of the design on it, they're obviously looking at the architectural design based on the renders submitted to date. But also things like those orientations, in this overlay, we've got, you know, some standards that are intended to try and help pull buildings up close to the road like you see on that front road. So, you know, Marty says, like, say one user comes in and instead of two of the buildings in the middle, they want one big building. If the overall footprint isn't changing, it's largely gonna be a fairly benign to staff level. Yes, I can say that. If all of a sudden they say, oh, wait, we're gonna wipe this all out and we're gonna get like three buildings that they want pulled back from the road, it'd be like, hold the phone, that's gotta go back through the review process for the, for the design aspects. And certainly individually, right now, they're supposing kind of a uniform look to the building that's been approved with conditions by Planning Board. But, you know, if you get one particular franchise that's gonna want their specific look, that's gonna have to be worked out between staff to get renders and then go back to planning.
I know that that part really isn't the big part of question. But of course, we're just looking at the overall picture and houses can flow. Is it really gonna work? The back, I only want another question, I feel humbling. The back far right corner that's marked as open space, and I notice you have a retaining wall going from the left to the right. Of course, I have a walk of property, I don't know what the grade is, but apparently you have to have that retaining wall? Is it possible to have that open space back there in the far right-hand corner as grassed and available for anybody that wanted to just walk a dog or have a picnic table or?
Well, absolutely, it is. And right now, we're committed to providing 1.26 acres of open space. And you'll notice the area that has that zigzag hatch in it. And I can point to it here, the zigzag hatch back in here. This area is all wooded. So one of the things that I hope to do is try to preserve some of those larger trees and, you know, it becomes a schematic representation of a retaining wall. Is it possible that perhaps the foundation on this building could actually work to accommodate some of that grade change? Absolutely. But it's too early to tell in the process, you know? You're dealing with a block and a schematic plan and schematic topography. And when this becomes real, is if you, after you consider rezoning this to the neighborhood business district, then the developer kind of goes back and cleans the slate and says, okay, let's make the plan real. Let's get a real, let's get the architect to develop building plans. Marty, I need you to look at grading, drainage, all of these components that we've just discussed in general become more fine-tuned. And actually, we prepare construction documents with the calculations and disturbed areas and will know heights of retaining wall and will really know it for retaining walls needed here. What this does is if you've been out to the site and you've stood there on the road, it goes up the hill to where the existing home is and then gently runs to the back and it gets a little steeper back in here. So what we were trying to do is to develop the site in the more suitable areas that can support grading and a bigger footprint like you have in a multifamily site. You know, it's not a single-family house that's fifty by thirty. It becomes, ooh, hundred feet by sixty, you know, bigger building footprints. And whether they're on foundation or whether they're slab on grade, all of that affects cost, you know, because structural engineering costs more money when you have to, that challenge in front of you. So what we tried to do is lay it out where we felt like it could make some sense. And that retaining wall, of course, is above this creek. And that is, we planted it close to the building, which is, you can actually walk out the back of the building on grade, but then there'd be a wall with a railing there before it drops off downward this creek on that side. And that hatched area here with the checkerboard hatch is actually a type eight buffer that's planted in accordance with the buffer regulations. So landscape buffer is required between the multifamily and the single-family. And if it wasn't required, we wouldn't show it, but we think it's a good feature. And Planning and Zoning Board looked at all of those landscaping components and approved our plan and of course, sent it on to you folks for consideration.
I just wish you weren't landlocked in the back where you had another way to get in and out, but the resident could go out the backside, but I know you're landlocked.
Well, you know, again, I understand, and having as many accesses and ingress, egress as possible is always a good thing. And we'd love to be able to have another way in and out. But unfortunately, we don't control all of the owners and we don't control all of the land. We have to work with the puzzle pieces that have been delivered or are available to us. But again, I understand your point.
Can you explain a little bit more the terrain of this property? It starts at the road, it goes up and then it goes back down the backside? Okay, for all those buildings in the front, which are, from what I believe, the lowest point, how are you gonna get all that river runoff to the one retention pond on the other side of the hill?
Okay. Well, let me do my best to explain that to you. Okay? The property, and in your exhibits, you have a colored sheet that shows the grading plan. I actually have it on this board here. You bear with me. I have time to flip this over and show it. So we feel a little bit calm in this, trying to make it work. One of the challenges with earthwork is we have the existing grades that we're trying to tie into. Okay? These red contours represent grading that occurs on the site. Okay? In other words, the grades out here right now appear really nice and gentle, climbing up to a certain point where the existing home is, and then they fall to the back. And there's a swale that runs back here that drains water off into the existing creek. So what we're trying to do is collect it in, and when you build a parking lot, the maximum grade within your parking lot is five percent. Okay? Five percent is five feet. It is one in twenty. Okay? So if you were to go up one foot of height over to the end of where Eric's sitting, the desk, you know, it's a relatively gentle slope. Where does five percent come in? That is the reason that's the maximum for parking lots. And I've seen parking lots that are steeper and certainly in our mountain community, there are exceptions to every rule. We've all seen parking lots where you can't get your door open adequately enough to hold it open. And that's the rule. That five percent becomes shopping carts, things like that. Don't start raising the weight from your vehicle. Even at five percent, you'll get some movement in your carts if you're not careful. Or the doors for older folks in their car are harder to get open when you're against grading, so to speak. So that five percent allows us to collect water underneath some of these parking lots and then pipe it over to, right here, there's an existing stream that starts and it runs to the back. And it actually has large pipes that carry water underneath Hendersonville Road and also from Baldwin Circle across. So those different areas, it, what we try to do is create a sheet flow condition in the inlets, capture it and then discharge it ultimately where it's going. And that may happen in segments up front and a segment at the back because I can assure you of one thing, the multifamily folks, they don't wanna take care of the water coming off the commercial site. You know, there's gonna be a little bit of shared and crossover water here when stormwater runs on in a parking lot. But that's how you do it. You manage it in smaller increments in these lots or the lot. you do it. You manage it in smaller increments in these lots, or the lot areas where you can connect it and direct it. And you'll notice that this area over here, it's undeveloped. It's just, that's a spot to direct stormwater to. We're trying to utilize that. The same thing with the clubhouse area is here, but all of this is just open space. And we picture a footbridge going across that creek, over to a dog walk area, those kinda components that we think the residents like to have in their communities. And again, my idea was to try to protect these heavily wooded area back in this upper right corner and avoid impacts in that area.
I mean, the, the thing that I'm still struggling understanding is you, you talked earlier a lot about using the water retention ponds to filter the water and stuff. But now it looks like you're not, the majority of the water's not gonna go to those ponds.
It's not a pond. It is an underground storage facility, okay?
That, that is, is that storage facility on the back corner?
It don't, it might be right here.
Oh, okay.
Or it could be back in here.
But, but how are you gonna get the water from the front to that storage facility?
Pipes.
Okay. I mean, terrain is enough that you...
Terrain, terrain's enough, yes. And, and in fact, we put it, we put storm drains in at six tenths of a percent sometimes, half a percent on some of the detention pipes. And the reason you do that is, you get full storage volume. If the pipe's too steep, it won't fill up with water. If it's too shallow, the whole pipe will fill up. So we get that benefit of the volume of storage in just a pipe. And I typically try to use things like pipes, perforated pipes, gravel, beds. And we create that storage volume that's necessary to, to again, capture the runoff and then meter the outflow. And that's the challenge.
To spin off the last question right there, the highest concern you're talking about is just where the parking complex is, it sounds like. But the, the commercial retail goes straight through.
No. There'll be detentions in the commercial retail as well. But there'll be separate systems. That way, the folks in the apartments aren't paying for the commercial center. You know, it, it becomes that balance when you're doing a project. So, the commercial center up front is totally separate from the rezoning that we're discussing tonight. The apartment complex back here, what I see happening, it all drains from here toward the back. And you can see those contours. So ultimately, we're gonna capture and treat it here and here, underneath the parking lot, but also have the ability to take it out here and again, do what we need to do. And again, if you said, how big of a space do you need, Marty? I mean, I can give you some rules of thumb, but I can't give you exact things until, one, we have an approval, we actually have real building shapes that mimic these shapes that you see before you, and we do calculations to determine that. And Natalie Berry in Henderson County, she goes through and she reviews our submissions to her to make sure we're meeting all of the conditions. And we're doing the right thing for the environment, for downstream neighbors, for our own site to protect runoff, okay?
Through the years of the work, and you jump to Natalie, obviously, I can speak to the fact of how heavy the scrutiny is for her, because oftentimes, stormwater is like the last thing, you know, to hold up a CO for a good while, whilst she gets everything that she needed from developers, from, you know, because there's certain operation and maintenance agreements that have to be recorded on the deed in advance.
And the inspectors every so many years to make sure they're operated properly.
These are all subject, you heard me, but you were talking about our kinda vague concept of stormwater plans that are stormwater apartments now. Both of these developments are looking at, and these two separate developments have a little, little under the same, real close scrutiny on, on the stormwater.
Another question I have is, will, will any of that open space area be flat enough that it can play in?
Well, hence the retaining wall, as we've shown. And again, it becomes, the question is, is what grade is it going to end up at? Can we tailor the buildings and the shapes? Our intent is to provide usable space. There could be a playground area with perhaps play equipment. Again, my goal is to try to save some of those large trees, because I think they create a good buffer in between different projects. And certainly, there's going to be opportunities. There's the pool area, there's the little clubhouse that we're showing there. Perhaps that could be a two-story clubhouse where you can walk out the back of it to some real flat space going down toward that creek and play area, and what I call the footbridge or swinging bridge, for all I know. It could be whatever ultimately we want it to be as we develop these plans. And, and those, we're starting to get into the, the details of the plan. And yes, there will be open space, and it will be usable open space. Now, dimensionally, this site has some challenges. As, as Ms. Franklin noted, it'd be wonderful to have an exit out the back. It'd be wonderful to have more space in between the parking areas where it didn't become asphalt. And that's why we developed this plan, to kinda show you how we're going to try to break up the parking lot in the back with, you know, landscaped islands and where the mailboxes are. And you can see the walking trail and the footbridge coming across the creek and maybe a little loop that you can take your dog or your son or daughter or grandchild and go for a walk, you know, and just experience the outdoor. Is it the, you know, is it like going to the Blue Ridge Parkway? No, not quite. It's going to Fletcher around to some area that is open space where perhaps you can throw a ball or a frisbee and try to keep it out of the creek from washing away. I mean, we, we have our limitations. What we're gonna try to do is, is craft the plan that makes the most sense for the users. And again, we're thinking about those things, and we're thinking about it right now, so you know that it's going to get incorporated into the plan.
If there are subdivision ordinance, I know it sets, sets aside a certain amount of property for open space and so on. Is, is the ordinance strict enough that that open space behind the clubhouse, if after they get in there, they decide, oh, we don't wanna build bridges over there?
Um, yeah.
It would have no value to the users if the bridge...
Right, right. There's, um, the, the section is actually called recreation area. Sometimes it kinda gets interchanged with open space, but it's recreation areas. We aren't specific about saying, oh, you must have a playground or you must have...
Right.
But it, it, there is a component of usability. So, you know, if we got close to near completion of the plan and showed it, and then all of a sudden, there's no bridge, where's your bridge? And how do you get to that? Then, you know, we potentially hold up some COs if it didn't match the site plan.
And I realize things will change, and they change what kinda playground they wanna put in and stuff like that. I mean, obviously, if these are one, two bedrooms, there may not be a whole lot of children, I don't know.
It's hard to say. I don't know where to segue into this. So just one comment that I wanted to make, and I thought was something I observed particularly noteworthy, is, you know, we send out notices to budding property owners, which would include anything type G, but we also would have gone across the highway, both ahead of Planning Board and ahead of tonight's council meeting. And for a development as large as this is, you know, because we, you know, we, while we're focused with on the residential rezoning, we did mention all the commercial aspects. I had zero phone calls ahead of Planning Board, and zero phone calls ahead of this meeting, which is, you know, did the mail get lost? The question pops in your mind. But I've not experienced a development of this size not generating at least a curious phone call or two in the past. So, just wanted to mention that as well. I think it's, because it's in an area that's dense, and I think expected growth like this has been kinda teased by virtue of our ordinances and our, you know, planning processes over the years. So I don't think it comes as a surprise. And this is just purely plan a brain, you know, other, you know, hopefully, not either way. You, you don't know what the future holds, but there is additional land on Maltland Circle, as you know, that comes up. And if this gets approved, you know, conceptually, we could see a future phase at some point if they're able to get more land. This is all the land they have tied up to this point. So, you know, in, in theory, you know, if, if this gets approved, they could go about trying to acquire additional land. And then it seems possible to then break through to get to Maltland Circle for additional. But don't wanna base anything on that tonight. That's just the big what if.
I mean, if they're actually, if that's a thought that they're having, then they may want to put some thought into, if they end up owning, owning that property over there, how could they build a back exit out of this subdivision? Because I, I think traffic's gonna be a huge issue here.
Well, I think traffic's a huge issue everywhere. And again, you're on a five lane commercial corridor. And when you look at the impacts, you know, certainly, any user that considers this site wants it to be accessible, wants it to be easy to get to. Any apartment that's on the site wants it to be easy to get to, wants it to be accessible. Because what does that mean? If it's really that much difficult to get to it, how many retail stores are gonna go, ah, I wanna be there, or I can get nobody coming to my store? So, you know, it, it, it works for us to try to, you know, create ease of access, multiple entry and exit points, and, and try to, again, craft the plan that makes sense for the property that we have available. I wish I could understand everybody's and was able, the developer was able to purchase all the land that he wanted, but they're not able to do that. There's folks that live there that are attached to it. And, and sometimes, as projects get approved and, and get down the road, and sometimes you can get started, and then all of a sudden, folks go, oh, I'm interested in selling my property all of a sudden. And you've seen that happen before. And it happens. And at that point, we have to make decisions like, whoa, if that happens, what does it mean? But that's where Eric comes in. Do we have to, you know, get the eraser out and erase and, and recraft the plan and come back through the process, certainly with new land available? That's what it would entail, in my mind, is we would have to come back before you again, and you get to see me, and I would get to visit with y'all. So, you know, that's what it's about. And about the phone calls, I think that speaks to the fact that there's not a lot of multifamily parcels available in Fletcher right now. I think this is maybe one of two or two areas that are possible.
Two little pockets.
And they're small pockets. And I think it also means that it's a pretty good use for back there, being as the phone hasn't blown up and the world hasn't stopped. And, you know, we're here before you tonight for your consideration. And we think the plan is a good plan. Does it need work? Absolutely, it needs work. And it, it has to be turned from a concept and schematic plan into something that's real. And that's where the rubber hits the road and the costs start determining exactly what's going to be built and how.
The only, the only other question I had is, does anybody know where the current school buses stop in this area?
I do not. Can't pretend to know that. I've seen them stop at various places.
I mean, do they stop right on Twenty-Five?
Yeah.
There are plenty of times up on the, in our jurisdiction, out of our jurisdiction where the school buses will be on.
And I'm not saying they don't pull off Twenty-Five in some areas, but it seems like it's more typical to stop.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, and we have shown sidewalk connections. I know they're hard to see under plan. They actually go from the public way, Hendersonville Road, all the way back into and loop around the parking lot into multifamily, okay? And one of our goals is to make that pedestrian-friendly and accessible.
And Eric, this, this whole unit, both the, the apartment area and the residential, that's all non, non-town roads, correct?
Uh, yeah, they're not creating any roadways. But this is what I'll be private driveway. So again, you're not gonna deal with traffic. You're not gonna deal with sanitation garbage pick up. You're not gonna deal with town name, paying street requests. It's, it's like the other apartments that we've seen, but it's just like a commercial parking lot practically.
Any more questions from council, you're done?
Kinda shocked they didn't have their phone calls. I know I put this on my Facebook, on your town Fletcher website. I've been taking phone calls. I've been talking to people, even up to Saturday. Most of them is basically, I've done this study for two years ago, is when are we gonna stop about putting out more apartment complexes? Because the infrastructure can't handle. Like you said earlier, the traffic is a big concern, big concern of mine. Because even one of the residences I talked to is actually, it is an apartment next door. And they said, they can't get out of the road. So I don't know how the residents are gonna do this. That, that can get a red light on the road. Saturday, the person I talked to lived across the street. Out of all the folks I've talked to, I'm sort of shocked they didn't, maybe since I built my Fletcher, you know, town face line, Facebook, it's made they felt comfortable calling me. So, the only person said they don't mind the apartment complexes. And it's pretty exciting about the retail, because they get hurt with the asphalt, spend their money, everything. It was the people across the road who decided because their plan on hopefully in the near future sell the property, for example, property. But everybody else that I talked to is, is, is mostly the infrastructure's number one. Schools, right now, all our schools, other schools are overflowing. Counties that build another, I'll be a major school, build a school around this area, I feel. But the big thing was, is the infrastructure can't handle it. For example, like when we come up to the red light right here, the other dad shows up and report of it. Because when I went on Fannery Road, the traffic's back the hallway to South Chase the curb. I've never seen that. It's, it's unreal. It even coming back on Howard Gap, people trying to turn on Fannery Road, couldn't do it because the turn in was back the hallway to the red light trying to turn on Howard Gap. So the car just stopping, holding up the traffic on Twenty-Five. I know you say it's a large highway, but I figure, but that, this is one little spot right here that's telling you the infrastructure can't handle all, all this. So, so a lot going on in this very small footbridge. And a big concern is the traffic, I feel. And that's another concern we have up here at the heart of Fletcher. Will mentioned that, I mean, we talked, one of my priorities was that the traffic was just unreal. But everybody I talked to, I can hear this, no, no more parks, if that makes sense. And also, we did a study two years ago, and it reflected that, which we're gonna do another study. I'm very excited about that, about hearing everybody's opinion and taxpayers of Fletcher and everything, and, and see what they, you know, and see what their bills are. So that, that's kinda shocking that there's no actual phone calls over there. So I'm shocked that there wasn't nobody here that, that come. Because most people was, I guess since they've been at the bay, that was good enough. I don't know.
Thanks for taking the heat.
Yeah. There's a couple of those points. This is where it kinda zooms back out to the larger planning that we've done over, you know, the last few years. You know, with, with respect to anybody, I get the sentiment about, you know, no more multifamily, no more multifamily. It's like, it's one of those issues, you can't completely zone it out of your jurisdiction. You know, I'm not aware, I don't know what Joe Marie should say about it. But the town, if you zoom out big picture, the town, and look at our zoning map, the town's probably done more than I'd say any other jurisdiction, county or city, to, to slow the faucet as best we can. You know, it started with the, the updates of the land use plan in 2013, where we found some inconsistencies with previous zoning, where the Hoopers Creek area, for example, was zoned to R3, which would have allowed, fortunately, the apartment developers weren't gowing up that land. But, you know, that at the time allowed ten units an acre, furthest away from your city center. So right after the land use plan, we downzoned all that to remove multifamily allowances and get it back to half acre, two units an acre. You know, we've got, well, but we don't have apartment complexes out there, though. And it's when, when folks talk to me about buildings and farms, I say, well, they could have been apartments, ten units an acre, which was allowed by the zoning ordinance at the time. So we took that off the table. Twenty, you know, that was 2015, 2018, you know, we were really concentrating on trying to steer our density right to the center, right near this five lane corridor, where, you know, traffic is bad as it is, you know, we took it off the table in the C1 zoning district and the C2 zoning district to preserve our commercial land. And again, basically, all that was left was one little block of R3 that's on the map for kinda having preserved some of a placeholder, you know, for higher density. And these two little pockets in contained in the overlay that were part of the, the heart of Fletcher overlay standards. And I, to this day, anytime I get in conversation, it's just about, you know, what are y'all doing to, to control? what are y'all doing to, to control growth? Because I say we've taken multifamily off the table, probably about 90% of our jurisdiction.
So you are getting a field of phone calls about growth?
Not, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Not that many.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody I talked to, they're very, I mean, nobody's complaining about anything, which, you know, with, with retail, restaurants, they, they want retail, they want commercials, they want restaurants. They, they want to stay close to, to the Fletcher, staying in their community versus going to Henderson. They're going to Asheville. So I haven't heard a personal complaint about that.
Sure.
But when you say, when you say apartment complexes, you can, you can just read your face about that.
Right.
And that's, that's one thing right there. And I said, you probably, you said you're taking some.
Another stat, too. Well, that's to, to go back to the Rutledge Road example for 2020. I mean, we had hundreds of calls and letters about that one. And council at the time held a line and stuck with the R2 zoning. Because again, our planning had come together and we've got a real clear picture for where we're trying to steer it. We know it's inevitable. We're going to get the odd projects here and there. But again, we're trying, as long as council sticks with land use plans, again, you know, we can study it more in the future. I don't know if you can completely shut it off. I don't know if it's like a use you can just ban outright.
Well, I was getting ready to say, I've been on council for 18 years, and every single development that has gone in in this town, people have said, that's too much, we don't need that, we don't need apartments. I moved here because it was nice and quaint and quiet. And every single one that goes into town, that happened. And they have to realize you cannot stop growth. You can steer it, but you can't stop it. They think you can just turn a stick and stop people from coming in here. It doesn't work that way.
Well, actually, there are some communities that actually have done a moratorium when they know they're, they only have a certain amount of land, there's not going to be new schools, there's not going to be any great increase to help the roads. So I know a community in South Carolina, and I'm thinking, that just makes common sense because unfortunately, DOT kicks in after everything's done. And once it's there, it's there, there's nothing you can do about it. And so I felt like this was being proactive on their part because they knew they couldn't handle this so much because they weren't getting any more schools and stuff. But I, I think that it is something to be carefully evaluated. And I think there has to be a balance with some. I don't have much of a problem with this project based on the fact that the seasons are on one side. And I know you have residential on the left, and it doesn't look like it's that much more, you know. But I don't know what the, I don't know what the solution is, to be honest, you know. It's just that it is what it is, but it's a shame of those people that live here. They spent our time, and we were 4:30 on Rutledge Road, and it's already backed off almost to, you know, South Chase, yeah. I don't, I don't know what you can possibly do about that.
Go ahead.
I'll just say one, I do agree with the, I think we're experiencing unbelievable amount of ambiism throughout our region right now. I think there's a critical lack of housing, particularly multifamily housing, and particularly in Fletcher. This opens up opportunity for a lot of people who don't have housing, who embarrassingly enough to say, maybe people that work for the town of Fletcher, maybe this gives them an opportunity to live in the communities they serve. Additionally, when I talk about growth, if we're not growing, everybody else around us is growing, for stagnation or decline, what does that mean for us? It means value.
I was just going to say, the, it's no consolation right now because we all experienced this in this room, myself included. And it's frustrating, is that to be caught up on the traffic lights, on the cross traffic. But something going on right now, and I've, I've mentioned this before, maybe this is more something for our newer council members. With the I-26 project going on right now, they're doing some changes on the signalization since that's happened. It's shortening the light length of the cross traffic going east and west. And that's why we're getting back up right now. It's not a short, we all know it's going to take another year or two here for parts of the I-26 to be done, completely done, or a two-year monthly window. So that's part of why they're making that civilization short. Howard Gap and particularly Fanning Bridge. So that's part of what we're experiencing. And that's supposed to, with that concluding, I-26 expansion, we're supposed to be getting some longer lengths of the cross traffic here.
So they shorten the sidelines to get more people going in.
They get more people going in.
It's been, it's been incident by.
Yeah, so that's, that's happening right now, but the general public doesn't all know that. We explain it to them when people call and complain on the phone. But that's something that's happening right now. It's purposeful, while it's, it's not pleasant, you know. And it's not an easy explanation, but that's, I mean, we're frustrated leaving here, just trying to go out, do business, still leaving because you get this short, short signal up here between people staring at their phones and not paying attention and driving. You can barely get through the light. So that, that's happening right now. And I don't know if people know that, that DOT has shortened, purposely shortened that. It's still frustrating, particularly on that other side of Fanning Bridge coming out this way. But that's, you know, that's not all growth thing, it's partly a growth thing, if you could picture.
Any more questions, Tom?
Well, for the thing right there, I know that the state that we're buying, I feel like lots of you drive around and see development everywhere in Fletcher. So we are strong and alive with that. I still that, again, the infrastructure right now cannot handle a situation like this. A lot, like going on a small footprint. It's just, I, I guess, me speaking out there, the folks that's called me, and all the other state and everything else that we have to put out, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you making that comment because I, I think we are so far from stagnant and dying that it's, it's like oxymoron, in my opinion. Because we got the building on Highway 25, we've got another building coming out here. We added the seasons, we have a park, we're at more, we're far from stagnant, we're very healthy financially. So I, I don't think trying to take a conservative or concerned cautious approach to development is wrong. And definitely said yes to a whole bubble of projects, and we've said no, so.
Any more questions, Tom, from council?
Seeing none, do we have a motion on the item?
What are you doing with it?
So the motion would be to either approve or deny the conditional zoning application number 2022-01.
And the, the planning board gave the.
The planning board. We had a seven zero vote to recommend the board.
I'll make a motion to approve conditional zoning application, 2022-01. Is that the only number we?
Yeah. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. You thank him.
And you did your presentation. The graphic. Even though you're.
Even though it was old school. I like old school.
Great, thank you.
Next up, I'm on the sixth, we have Mr. Will Booth, he's up here already, he gave a quick little announcement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, good to see you this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you and give you a little update. I think we, this may actually be the older presentation, so I'm going to put in the video here, bear with me just for a minute. And if this will not work, we're going to ask Marty to stick around and give us an old school. He did a great job. Thanks. So again, appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. When we met with you all in January and you entered into contract to, to sell the property to the developers, we made the, we made the promise that we would come before you and, and give you an update on regular intervals. And, there we go. And so speaking with your town manager, we felt like now would be a good time for us to come before you and give you a quick update. And I don't know if you're getting the version on the screen, but I do have copies. Are you guys seeing that?
Yeah.
I'm going to leave copies if you guys.
All right.
In case you want to take notes for something that you might think about.
Thank you.
You can certainly jot down notes. This is going to be a refresher for, for many of you, but Councilman Reed, we haven't had a chance to be before you. So appreciate the opportunity to walk you through the project and sort of let you know where we are in the process. One of the things that I'll share with you is, is the developers will all be here for the next update. Mr. Waddell's been in Florida, of course, your winner. Mr. Lewis is on spring break this week. And so they're looking forward to coming back and giving you an update in person. And I'm quite certain that I'll be with them when we do that next update. So again, this is, this is the presentation that we made to the planning board on March 15th. And Councilman Lance and Councilman Franklin saw this presentation, so forgive the, forgive the repeat, but certainly feel free to jump in. Again, this first slide is just the, from your original master plan and the vision that you all had for the Heart of Fletcher. And this is a photograph of the existing site, but certainly that's not the way the existing site looks today. It is quite different as you see the building starting to come down. It was, it was interesting to drive by and see the, the vision of Town Hall across the way. So that was, that was an interesting look. The site plan that you see here in front of you, it is the plan that we have presented in concept to both planning board, and you all as council have seen this a number of times. On the south end or on the left end of the, of the project is proposed triangle stop, so convenience on that end. In the middle, we have a food restaurant facility, two buildings that then face Long Highway 25, or mixed-use buildings. And then finally, the two buildings on East Fanning Bridge at this point are planned for residential. Although, as we talked about in council in January, that could very well change as we continue to, as we continue to look at the project. One of the key points that we've talked about, you, you all talked a lot about traffic in the last presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about that tonight, too. The Johnston Street connector that will connect to Howard Gap Road and then over to East Fanning Bridge, we believe is a real key cog for this development. This allows folks to access businesses and, and the apartments from the rear, not from Highway 25, and that will limit the number of driveways on Highway 25. And we believe that that's, that's a varied portfolio. Again, a little hard to read some of the text on here, but this just tells you exactly what I just said in terms of the uses that you have on those, in each of the buildings. So what's proposed? You all, again, have seen this slide before. We've talked about restaurants, taproom, tasting room, resale hardware, professional office, educational, live work. What I'll tell you is there continues to be a tremendous amount of interest in this. Since the, the project has gone into contract, Mr. Lewis has met with numerous folks who have shown sincere interest in the property. I'm not deliberately obviously to tell you who those folks are, but certainly a lot of office interest, there is a lot of retail interest. Certainly the, the restaurant space, there's, there's good interest there. This has been nothing but bolster the, the interest of the developers to proceed, complete all of their new buildings opposing the property. So they've heard nothing from anyone in the general public that lets them believe this would not be a very successful project. So we hope that that gives you all a level of comfort that we're seeing and our clients are seeing. Again, this is just a perspective view, looking, looking down from a bird's eye view. Again, I always point this out, we have it from the architectural rendering, a faded restaurant building that's in the middle, that would be pulled forward, there would not be a drive around it, that building would actually address Highway 25 just as the other buildings do.
I mean, the way, the way that drive, driveway is for that takeout, you must have an awful serious customer to dedicate a driveway like that for a takeout.
We, we think that there's a strong interest from a lot of different folks. And we do believe that that, back up Councilman Dave, just so we're, we're all looking at the same thing. The, the odd drive-through as you go around really is, is something that, that folks during the course of COVID saw was very important. And as we see, and, and our clients talk more, restaurateurs, having the option for some type of a takeout is just really important. They want that option. We all hope we'll be just like we're here today. We're all here in person and together, but they want the option to be able to serve a takeout. We've had a lot of conversations, you've seen the site plan more for tweak a little bit. At one point, we had the parking lots connected through, and, and really through some feedback with some of the council members. We, we agree or concur that that, that drive-through really needed to be a separate drive itself. And so, so it's also going to be wide enough, if you get in there and decide that maybe you don't want to go there, you'll be able to pull out and around. So we have been thinking about that.
That particular building, is that on the next slide, is that the blue rooftop?
That, let's see. Yes, it is. That is the blue rooftop. No, I'm sorry, that is actually the gas, the gas pumps. That is the lighter building roof. Again, that and the architecture would match the other buildings. So that, you can see that that would set back a little bit, but in that plan that planning board is seeing, that you all have seen, that building would address this really.
I like the way that it's tapering up to the buildings. It's a very pleased type of little building is what we already have.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Will, do you have any feel yet that you think you might be able to get a sit-down restaurant? Something other than fast food?
Absolutely. We think there's, there's a very strong possibility of sit-down restaurants. I know they've had a number of conversations with potential restaurateurs, folks that have other facilities in the area, they have shown interest. One of the, one of the keys, and I was going to, I'm going to just jump ahead to a few updates for you. You'll, you'll recall the building on the corner, we were working with DOT to acquire the orphaned right-of-way in the man's. And a number of those folks have said, once that's settled, we're very interested in that. Come talk to us. As, as I learn, I'm an engineer, not a, not a real estate person, but the more I listen to these folks who I learn, typically, those folks will look out about 12 to 14 months. And so they want to know that we're basically ready to break around. The hope is that we've gotten people signed up, that it tips to 50%, 60% occupancy, and that would trigger them starting to pull permits to build their own buildings. So, but yes, I think that there's strong interest in sit-down restaurants, absolutely. And then I'm going to jump ahead to, to, again, to the summary of, of the buildings. The buildings would include, as the master plan shows today, two residential buildings with a maximum of 36 units, two-story buildings. And that was one of the things that we worked through with councils, that those buildings would only be two-story. Two mixed-use buildings, two-story mixed-use buildings, at least 13,500 and 18,760 square feet. And then two single-story, but two-height, two-story tall buildings that would be, that would be mixed-use and about 3,500 and about 6,300 square feet. So phase one of the project is already the one, you all are already fulfilling part of the obligations through contract of moving the building. Phase one would include, as the developers plan, to grade the entire site. So they would not simply grade for the convenience, they would actually grade everything. And, and I'm going to show you a rendering of what that may look like shortly. So again, we would see that those would all be ready pads, ready to go, ready to build and develop on. Construction of the proposed triangle stop. Uh, construction of the proposed triangle stop and then construction of Depot Street, which is the one street that comes in off of Highway 25, and Johnston Street, that would all be constructed as part of phase one. So effectively, all of the infrastructure would be in place, now we're just simply looking at filling in the buildings as we go forward.
Would Depot Street be a right around the street?
That's a great question, and, and, uh, you must have been listening in on conversations that we've had with DOT. Uh, to give you a little update, um, we hope that that will continue to be a full movement turn. And if you look on this plan, it actually shows that to be a full movement turn. Uh, we have been working through, we've met with DOT, we've met with DOT board members, and our traffic study, uh, has been completed to a point. Uh, there are some recommendations that that traffic study, preliminary recommendations that that traffic study has made, that we'll continue to discuss with DOT, and the town is certainly gonna be a part of those recommendations. Well, one of the recommendations could be the operation and movement off of Depot Street. One of the reasons that it's really important from the developer's perspective that that be a full movement turn is if you're coming from the north, if you're coming from Asheville and Buckingham County, and you don't understand or realize that, uh, East Fanning Bridge, turning at the right is the way to get in behind and access this, if Depot Street becomes a right-in, right-out, there's no option but to go always out and make a U-turn and come back and forth. And so the developers, uh, feel like that's a very, very strong, uh, uh, feature that they want to keep in the plan, and we're gonna continue to work with DOT to come up with solutions so that that's a workable plan and a, and a safe plan in the traffic context. So I'm gonna come back to traffic in a minute. This shows what you might see with phase one. Again, you see Depot Street that we were just talking about, coming from, uh, in this case, it would be the top side of the take-down to Johnston Street, that would connect to Howard Gap, the movement of Howard Gap is right-in, right-out. And then, uh, East Fanning Bridge, the connection to Johnston Street would be full movement. You see the, um, proposed triangle stop there, and then the rest of the site would be completely graded and grassed. It will look like a football field out there. It will be, it will be relatively very pretty and will be well-maintained, and as you take a look at some of the other Waddells properties, I think you'll, you'll see that, uh, that it will be very well maintained. Um, this is, uh, rendering, and this is cut off a little bit, um, for folks in the audience, but I think you all can see it, this is a rendering of the proposed triangle stop. This is one of the things that was presented to the planning board, um, at their, at their meeting. One of the pieces of due diligence is we wanted to verify that phase one of the project, uh, could be granted a zoning, uh, a zoning permit. And part of that was the heart of Fletcher property. And, and so part of that look was one of the things that we had to present to the planning board. Uh, I think we talked about this in a couple of meetings, and I've talked with a number of council members. This is, is paying homage to, to the Town Hall. Uh, we know there were lots of ideas that were thrown about, and I think the developers are committed to, uh, having locations in, in the development that can, uh, that can, uh, pay tribute to, to a lot of the past, uh, facilities that were here and a lot of the history. But they feel very strongly that this is, uh, this is, this look really needs to, to blend in with Town Hall.
Is that seating area there?
Uh, that is. There would be an outdoor seating area in, in the facility. Um, strange as it may sound, with the convenience store, this is very much of a restaurant, a sit-down pub, taproom, they have outdoor seating areas, and again, I invite any of you all who want to come and visit the, the Waddells facilities, they're, they're quite nice, and, um, their facility that's in, in Penrose that they finished last year is certainly worth, worth visiting.
Do they have any facilities in this, Waddells?
They do. Uh, so their facility that's closest to you all is just on Fanning Bridge, right by the airport.
Okay.
And their facility, they do have a indoor taproom there, and they have Dunkin' Donuts that's attached to the building.
Right.
The, the Penrose side is standing alone, but they have the outdoor seating area, they have cornhole, they have, uh, places for highlight, places for, uh, places for horseshoe. Uh, that is really playing on the Coots Trail, because it's adjacent to the future Coots Trail. They see that same opportunity here because of the adjacencies to the park. Folks are gonna want to be outside.
So there's gonna be a condition to, like, a walk, a walk path from the park to this vicinity here, so, so they can come to the restaurant and have a sit-down?
Absolutely.
Enjoy that?
Yes, part of Johnston Street will include a, a walking trail slash sidewalk that run along that entire section as well as the east street. Absolutely. We want to take the pedestrian, uh, folks into consideration as we went through, 100%.
And right now, we have our sidewalk, I mean, that was completed kind of three, four years ago now, it, it stopped, um, by what's the business, the pain management, um, place?
Right.
And, and connected, it was a DOT project, remember, that we connected up to 25, so you, even without that path, you'd be able to walk.
That's right.
To that store.
That's right. We, we anticipate that there would be a, a lot of traffic there. This, this rendering, again, it's a little hard to see for the folks in the audience, but this rendering was, again, one that we presented to the planning board, is important for the city. One of the, part of overlay, um, standards was that we have a percentage of frontage on the buildings, the, uh, buildings that front on the highway. So we don't have a sea of parking that you see as you drive along the road, you see buildings, and I, I've told many of you that this is a lot like Herbert Village, if you drive by Herbert Village, and, and, and this would be similar to that, that you can see the buildings fronting, even to a point where we have the drive-through, we've got a faux wall that would actually be extended off the building that would, uh, that would look like a building, it's not, you're not gonna see that drive-through from, uh, from Highway 25.
How many total acres is this?
Right at five acres. Five acres. Right at five acres, it's just a pair under five with the DOT property coming in, should be just over five acres? That's actually a good segue. One of the, uh, due diligence items that we have completed at this point, uh, is, is survey, uh, and the developers have completed a survey of the property at this point, environmental, uh, the zoning approvals of phase one have been that granted through planning board at this point, which was important. And then the last major hurdle is the traffic study. And, and again, we've got to continue to work through the issues with DOT, your town manager shared, uh, some of the things that, that you all encounter and know on a day-to-day basis with traffic that, uh, we see from, uh, Interstate 26 and the way they have manipulated the light cycles at this point, we have to have further, uh, conversations with DOT and make sure that this project can work well with everything that's here. So we hope that, uh, we'll have further conversation with DOT over the course of the next month. Town will be involved in that. Our goal is to, um, to begin, uh, work in phase one in the fall, and so the intent is still very much close on the property. Developers would like to close the property as soon as possible, they would like to have closed last Monday. I, I think there's a number of things that, uh, still need to work out primarily related to traffic, but at this point, uh, our folks are very comfortable and excited about the project. Again, I talked to a couple of you earlier, uh, about coming out and taking a look at some of the facilities, and I invite you to do that, I'll extend that invitation. Obviously, you can't all gather together, or we have to have public notice for that meeting, but certainly we can make sure that, uh, any of you that would like to visit can visit, and all for the developers, I want them to be there so that they can hear your thoughts and ideas for, for, uh, some of the things that you all have asked. So, uh, a little bit of a quick overview, I know you've had a long meeting, but I'm glad answering questions, uh, and you all might have any questions, comments?
Some question I have is, we, we talked about that last development, what are your plans here for, uh, storm runoff?
Good question. We will primarily be using, uh, subsurface detention systems, and I'm gonna go all the way back, so, uh, I don't know that, ah, there's a mouse. So if you notice the green space here?
Right.
That is south of the, uh, triangle stop, we will end up with what's called a storm tech system, which are buried chambers that allow stormwater to infiltrate into the ground. So all of the water from Johnston Street, Depot Street, and, uh, parking lot and building would go into that storm tech system and would infiltrate water back into ground. And then ultimately, there's a storm drain pipe that you see right here that goes into the road, and then there's storm drainage that ultimately goes across Howard Gap. Uh, for the future developments, each of those, similar to the previous development, they would, uh, this property is, is to a point that it's so valuable that you'd have to take the manage of real estate, and all of the systems would be underground. So under all of the parking lots, you can see similar storm tech systems if we utilize through that. But that would be what you'd see in the project.
So, so that grassy area is gonna be relative, relatively level?
It will be. It absolutely will be, but, but again, uh, you know, you've got the, uh, you've got the, 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 uh, outdoor seating area, so they want to make it very nice, that's gonna be well landscaped, it's gonna be a, a very needy entry feature into town, for sure. And that's one of the places that great to suggest and thought tonight to the developer, uh, if you all have.
And if usually, like, if they expand out, they'd be the outdoor seating?
Yeah, absolutely could. Absolutely could.
Uh, storm tech is a system that Town Hall has, so it's a weird, it's a popular one for more urbanized developments, where there's not a lot of real estate, which probably isn't.
You said it's going across Howard Gap, I mean, the drainage, where is it going again?
It does. So ultimately, there's an existing storm drainage pipe here, and then ultimately, I'm not sure, Councilman Franklin, if it goes under the railroad tracks first and then Howard Gap, or if it goes under Howard Gap before it gets to the railroad tracks, that ultimately is headed down to, uh, to Ken Corvus. Any more questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Blue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council member. Look forward, all members will look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you. Thank you. The next slide, one of the, thank you, we have our one local meeting, GP and our organizational structure, Ken.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Well, I don't have to take much of a time unless you got lots and lots of questions, but it's one of the, then some of the structural changes here in this part. Uh, obviously, we've already properly made this question, the resignation of Detective Lieutenant Barall left us a significant vacancy there, so, and based on some of our staff, staff shortages that we discussed pretty rightly, uh, the decision was made to promote Brian Foreman, Lieutenant Foreman, Captain, instead of promoting another lieutenant. Uh, we did have two lieutenants and one captain, Captain Gutierrez, who was pretty much responsible for both, uh, the support administrative side of things and also the operations side of things, and, uh, making sure everything continued to move smoothly, we got things done, we did get done, and then again, with Lieutenant Barall resigning, uh, the decision was made to promote Lieutenant Foreman, Captain. We're gonna split up the duties, the administrative duties, uh, Captain Gutierrez is gonna oversee, uh, administration managers, and then Captain Foreman will be overseeing the day-to-day operations, in other words, he will oversee patrol, uh, the service to the public and the community service, he'll oversee investigations. Kind of, yeah, kind of what we're in the business to do, that will follow, Captain Foreman, and then Captain Gutierrez will, uh, oversee all the various activities, which are part of the administrative activities, they provide the support, so that we can, uh, provide service to the community, that being, you know, all administrative managers, hiring, uh, equipment, buying equipment, working cars, assisting with the budget, and those type of things. So with the, your jet items, you should have a little bit of a functioning chart that I provided for you there, it kind of, uh, breaks up the different duties that they're gonna be overseeing. Uh, that is tentative, uh, I'm sure there'll be some rolling changes and change, and we identify some strengths and weaknesses, and maybe, uh, one of them is better in this area than the other, so we'll probably tweak that a little as time goes on, but you should probably, uh, get a pretty good gist of, uh, what we're trying to do with that. Uh, so instead of having one lieutenant investigation, one sergeant investigation, and then one detective, uh, we'll now have a sergeant and two detectives, which I think is gonna be more effective anyways. Uh, Lieutenant Barall was over-supervised the detectives, but he also did some investigative work of his own, and he also had more administrative tasks as a lieutenant that he needed to tend to. So now the detective division will limit any administrative tasks that they're required to do, and, uh, hopefully they can focus most of the attention on investigative matter that they're supposed to be doing, so I think it'll be more effective long-term that way as well, and it gives, uh, it gives another officer an opportunity to step up and become a detective, so, as we talked about last time, there's a little bit more incentive and motivation and opportunity to start with this as well. Questions? Questions? None?
In general, can you boil it down to what we're losing and what we're gaining in terms of position?
Well, we, we had two lieutenants and one captain, we're gonna have two captains and zero lieutenants.
Okay.
Cost-wise, it's basically identical, because we're out of place in, uh, Lieutenant Barall's position, we're taking his lieutenant pay, giving it to Lieutenant Foreman, making the captains, the pay's basically, cost is identical.
Okay.
So we're not losing any money, uh, we're not taking any money, that's an even swap. A long term, I, I do expect at some point in time, you'll probably hear me ask for the patrol lieutenant spot back, I just think as we continue to grow, we just listened to a couple of presentations on the growth of Fletcher and, and lease services are gonna grow with that, so I do think as we, uh, continue to, uh, adhere best practices, we continue to grow, and, and, you know, I think it was about a year ago today, almost, we talked about body campers, at some point in time, I think we're gonna have to look at that again, that's gonna add more administrative responsibility. So these two captains, I think, uh, when we get staffing up to power, we discussed that a lot, uh, and, 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 it's looking promising, I think I see some light at the end of the tunnel there. Uh, it adds up to power that these two captains are gonna be able to do what they're really supposed to be doing, and I think things will run fairly smoothly, but as we continue to grow, uh, I, I would anticipate, I can see a need for that patrol lieutenant spot, uh, the, the detective lieutenant spot, I, I don't see that need, I don't think that's gonna be pressing, I'm really, I don't know, detective, I don't think they're doing the hard work, so I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna see a need, my team will probably ask for that position back, and hopefully, I don't have that on my face later, but I don't anticipate that, but the patrol lieutenant spot, for full transparency, I can see that at some point in time, needing that back.
So, does the detective division show on this chart, or is that a separate?
Uh, I don't know, it, it should show very briefly, if you look under Captain Foreman, I believe it's the second thing down there that says investigations.
Oh, second.
So, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I just, I don't wanna interrupt if council's got any questions, but, um, this, at this point, it doesn't affect our current year budget, we don't anticipate in it up the one we're working on, that it's gonna have any appreciable difference, so, uh, I would think that'd be a question y'all have, is this gonna cost more money with you right now and right now? No.
Yeah, no, financially, there's really no difference, uh, it's just the division of labor, to make sure we can cover everything we need to cover, looking towards the future. Uh, and also, you know, you didn't want to, uh, you know, you don't want to promote someone just for the sake of promoting, then that's not best for the long-term interest of the police.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks for your work.
Appreciate it. Thanks to you.
Uh, I don't think Jen would have a special on the how the contract's budget request, we made a request of about $12,000 in offers. In the past two years, I think just funded around $5,000 to pay that level, and if you have any other staff some direction about what it is, or who wants them to go with the budget. Um, Mark, did you have anything else to add on that?
Yeah, I, thanks, Mayor. I, so, you, you heard from Jenna being calling at the last meeting, and I know there were some questions about growth of the system and ridership, and there was also another part of the information that I had seen, it wasn't in the packet, about just a description of the two route systems that they use, the fixed route system and the, it's called a paratransit system. So I wanted to make sure you had that, and then Bob Davy had asked a question, how many routes are actually in Fletcher proper?
Stops.
Yes, stops, not route, excuse me, stops. Um, so you've got three things that are in this supplemental packet here, um, so if you look at that, the one that should be on the dais and was emailed to you at the back of it, there's three things that, first is the, um, description of the three fixed route systems. So Route 3 is the one that serves Fletcher, and it's got a list of the numbers of ridership, uh, the percentage of ridership that's from Fletcher across the whole county, and then, um, the breakout on expenses as far as, uh, with the local match that's required or being requested of Fletcher. So you can see it's 6%, it's in the bottom of the page here, of the ridership that's from Fletcher, serving Fletcher, I should say, stopping here. Um, and then, uh, the local match, again, is that they're requesting for the new budget year is just over 12,000, when I was, 12,854, if you look on the right-hand side, the total match was. The other thing, excuse me, I wanted to point out, they didn't really talk about the paratransit, but that's- but that's also another service. Not a lot of ridership in Fletcher that's getting that, but it's not a lot of ridership throughout the county. But that's for people with disabilities that can get a route, a ride from where they reside typically to another location, and it's not a fixed route. So we got, we had 22 in this period that was measured, or 2% of the paratransit ridership. I just thought you should have this information, so you know what's going on here with transit ridership between people on a fixed route, Route Three, and this paratransit, and what the numbers are. We've been budgeting 5,000 a year, this is the decision councils made in the last two years, and we haven't come up to the local match requests that the county calculates for our portion of the share. And as you, as you know, the vast majority of the cost of this is paid by state, federal grant, a little bit for ridership fare contribution, and then the local match for the local governments. Most of it grant money.
Is this actually a standalone entity, or is it a county program?
It's, the county coordinates the funding for it, so the federal, state money, the ride fares, and then the local match, but they contract with WCCA to run it.
So again, in effect, that is kind of a county program?
Yeah. So, yeah, it, it, the county, yes, it's a program that they've brought in, and then they, for the actual day-to-day running of it, WCCA runs.
Right.
So, yes.
So the chart, you know, looking at?
Yeah.
So basically, 26,850 in 2015, down to 8,136 now?
Right. Significant drop. Yeah. Yeah, so they, they, they've been, as she indicated, they've been shrinking ridership.
Pretty much two-thirds, like, there's a third running riding as opposed to six years ago.
Right. So, there's a lot less ridership on it than they had been.
Now, is this a total ridership for the whole program?
I think so, that's for the whole thing.
Was this Rafter?
No, this is Rafter.
Oh, not Rafter.
I'm sorry, I said Rafter.
Yeah.
So that's just us?
Yeah.
Our ridership has dropped?
Yes.
Down to one-third of the six years of what used to be.
You got a lot of ridership.
Well, we used to judge, and when we first started contributing, that oftentimes you'd see that us running, you know. Bill Moore used to judge about, is anybody here a rider? Here are seven.
Not just Fletcher, Route Three, or is it, are you just controlling Fletcher?
Either number is for Fletcher, the only one of the three fixed routes is Route Three that Fletcher is part of.
Or is it Ocean?
Yes, that's right. But that's the only one of fixed route stops that serves Fletcher.
I see what Chris was saying, right? Your question was, that's fourteen, you understand, fourteen, Fletcher, ten on Route Three.
But of the three fixed routes, Route Three's the only one that serves Fletcher.
So it could be the five numbers for, there's one. The O C, the county.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's got to be, it's got to be ridership for, for Route Three for all areas, because Fletcher doesn't have that much ridership.
Did you say that instead of ten stops, it was actually seven?
Yeah, we counted seven in, in Fletcher proper, so we didn't have the Fletcher town limits. And then, you know, you're going to have, if you look at the route map, you have one or two that are near the satellite areas, so if you want to give some partial credit, so that's a Fletcher stop. If you get to, if you, the bottom of the map, there's crossing over the interstate, you know, we've got some satellite parcels down there, so like, you have a truck stop, that's Fletcher.
You mean in Naples?
Yes. Says Naples, but that's, you know, that's right across, it's on Highway 25, and you know, you're right near a cross over there, that's the truck stop.
Right.
Yeah, so that's satellite. But, but if, up to the north, further north of this, within the actual Fletcher town limits, we count it seven stops. There are mostly all along Highway 25, and you got that one on Fanning Bridge. And we didn't count the one coming up over on the farm west side there, which is that connector one that connects to the Asheville.
At the airport.
Yeah. So that allows people to, then connect there to go into Asheville and vice versa, I guess.
So it looks like, I, I, Chris was talking about the, I'm hearing, is Fletcher is 2018, it's one thing, the ridership, probably, we have two, about?
That's based on the ten stops, and there were three stops, and really, there weren't any, so those numbers are probably a little high. Although they did say that the, the most popular was Spot, and Route Three in Fletcher is Lulu's.
But they got the bad location, like, they got the one right here in First Terminal, Fanning Bridge, there's a spot right there, and stops and blocks the whole interstate.
Well, supposedly, she said they moved that to in front of Lulu's. That's what she said when she was here last week. That it's not supposed to be there, that they moved it up to Lulu's because of the backup of traffic.
Last Monday, it was here, they, I see the stop.
Interesting, because I saw, that's what I heard her say.
There's still a sign there, I see the stop, it was the council table. There's like, the backup, it's like, there was a stop. Yeah.
It looks like they moved the stop on Fanning Bridge.
Well, when they get this new development point in here, they could just do a Lulu that, and have a nice place to stop.
You don't need to make a decision tonight, I just wanted you to have, follow up her presentation, additional information to consider as you make the final decision on funding. I'll, I'll have an amount, when I present the recommended budget to you, and I may just put their request in, and then you can either consider approving it or something less than that. That's what I've been doing the last couple of years.
And you remember?
Their match request.
Or do you have the jurisdictions, or how, how much they're funding?
You know, as a good Bush mayor, I have to get that, and, um, I need to find that out, because I, I'm assuming that they're doing, because I've heard that they're doing less than the, the match, but I don't know that for a fact, I can't find that out. So are they, if they're paying the full match, what's?
In, in the last five years, what have they been paying roughly every year?
Five thousand, I think, the last two years, and it was like, 2,000 or 3,000 before that, several years back. And it's a small park, under the mall.
And the reason, Trevor, is, is, in general, it seems like a lot of the people that are riding this through Fletcher are going through, they're, they're not a whole lot of people from Fletcher that are using.
Oh, air for, air for citizens.
Right.
Yeah, so it's Asheville, there's some more residents. But, I mean, you could argue that there's a downwind, they're stopping, or instead of money, or whatever, especially.
Well, they keep four plus there, they're not spending that money.
But I don't know, I just, I just.
Any more from Council?
So when are we going to talk about this again?
Uh, when I present.
I can't hear anything.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll put their full match request in, and then you can discuss, and I'll find out between that and the other jurisdictions, again, the full match request.
Which is 50%?
Yes, it's 50% of, there's a long form, yeah, declaration, I don't know if we'll go back and find it, but it's 50% of the difference after the federal grant, state grant, and I think in the fares, and then I think that balances the local match, and then they do 50, and I think the county's doing half of that match requirement, that they need to establish, do the other half, and they corroborate, I think based on ridership there. But I, I get more detailed explanation of the match calculation. I'll find out that question on the ad for all of you.
Anything more from Council members? Any comments?
I'll try to run through you a little bit faster, maybe from last week, this potential same comments, I did intend to do. New, the Town Center demo project, I reported last week, that started on March the 14th, D H Griffin hit the ground running pretty fast, you can see how quickly the progress of the demo, and they've removed all the buildings, with the exception of the three that are in the railroad right-of-way, and they have to get full approval of a right-of-entry agreement. And they indicated last week that they felt that we're going to get it approved last week, so they're, they're getting very close, that they don't have it, they should have it any day. So with that, then once Fletcher lawn and garden and Mr. Johnson vacate the property, they'd be able to resume demo operations. And right now, we're, April 30th is when Sammy Johnson's operation's supposed to be completely off of Fletcher lawn and garden. They're moving over to the location over here, you know, Catty Corner here, from Town Hall property, and in some form or fashion reopen, and I think that's their plan. And he's got the auction April 23rd, so we discussed seven days on April 30th, and I even did a, our lawyer wrote off a kind of an acknowledgement today, Kate, he signed it, basically, just making sure we're all on the same page to be off, and so the demo company can resume. So it's been good communications with Sammy on that. So that's moving along, and that, the one little bump they did was, and I mentioned to you last week, and then I followed up with the contractor, was there was a hydraulic lift in that old service station building, and, so we have a change order to deal with that, and they mentioned, because you all had some questions, why didn't they catch that? It was underneath the, they found it underneath the cement, so they didn't know. Otherwise, they've been good to deal with to this point, as we know, smoothly. Next thing, repairs the damage, from the flood damage at Town Hall, the contractors started work, it's progressing well. You know, we're anxious to get it done, particularly so for the police department, because they will get to play musical chairs, we're making it work right now, but once that's done, then the chief and captains can get back in their office, and the detectives, and just everybody back down at PD, because there, a lot of them are in the training room, the chief's in an auxiliary office outside of the police department, we've got an administrative assistant, Leslie Fleming's up in administration, and so we have a spare public office area there. It's working, but it, we're glad it started, so that's moving ahead. And also, along those lines, I, I know I mentioned that because there, there was a possibility, with that surge in water pressure the day that that happened, and we had heard that there's, they think there was a faulty valve at the intersection near sort of King Creek, Mills Capital Airport Road coming together, that made that a faulty valve there that contributed into this. They have an engineer who's investigating it, making sure our pressure reduction valve is a building here, that's supposed to stop things like that. Was that working right? If so, there's a chance we may be able to subjugate our client to Hendersonville, basically their loss on it with our insurance. Insurance still pays it, but the, like, the risk, you know, experience would be attached to them, not us. So that's good, they're checking it out, I don't have the results on that yet. Let's see, I mentioned to you last week about taking over the DOT roads in Wildwood, in similar fashion to us petitioning them to delete the DOT roads that were in Fletcher Hills, Front Bankers. Javel Presley, our public works director, has been in contact with DOT staff. The deal before with that other subdivision was they had to bring up those roads to a certain standard, basically resurface them before we considered taking over the three in Wildwood, the three in Wildwood again, were green leaf, oak leaf drive, and pine needle. So the, the district engineers agreed to look at that and see if there's a way they can move that up. Once they, we know they can do that, get a timeline, and then we can start the formal process of petitioning DOT to take those over. So that's the latest on it. I mentioned last week a meeting with Bruce McDonald regarding the government access channel, and Mr. McDonald is right now just focusing on the government access piece and partnering with the municipalities to get content on it, and possibly down the road, a joint operation, which really just means some paper, getting more revenue in from the state to operate Budget process, so right now we're reviewing, we're updating our revenue estimates and final expense calculations. I'll be working with Heather Taylor, our finance director, to put together a recommended budget that I'll present to you at the May 4th budget workshop slash retreat. And just as a reminder, at that May 4th meeting, we're going to be, we'll meet at Costa's for breakfast at eight, and then start the meeting over here at nine. I don't know, we've been moving into the conference room, but if you're okay, we can do in council chambers, and I can run the PowerPoint from here, but where are you? Do you like to still do that conference room, or?
Well, I reserve the multipurpose room or the conference room, we can't use council chambers, because it's closed for, for many people. So, either one.
Yeah, if you want, I can, we can use, go up to multipurpose or do in the conference room.
I think all's purpose.
All right, good. You've got more to do?
Yeah. Okay. So that's moving along, and then the last thing, just again, a reminder, we've got a flyer, we've got information going out about the shred event on April 23rd from nine to noon in the south parking lot here at Town Hall, and then also the operation pill drop, so that's the medication term in that the police department will coordinate. So happy to be doing that again, just the public will, particularly the doctor and shredding. So, that's all I have.
Is there any questions, um, from Mark from Council? I was going to ask, all of them are at a closed session, but we forgot to get, so we have promotions in a closed session for contract negotiations?
I got to do that for that real quick, because I had. Just wanted to mention, I'm sure you guys have heard of the council, they do this, they have some lists, there's some history, I think, areas there, and brands there, I didn't think there was going to be that many people was there, because it was cold, I don't know if it was cold, but more, I'm telling you, it was a pack.
Now, didn't you have that, where you had to sign up ahead of time or something?
Yeah, we did.
Did that work, pretty well?
You know, it worked, and I know, and I appreciate Sheila's feedback from the budget workshop about, you know, some people being upset, being turned away, turned away. They, what they did is for people weren't registered, there was, I think they tried to move them to the field that had the least amount of.
Yeah, field, yeah.
Yeah, field five.
Field one.
Or field one.
There was a whole lot of.
Yeah, so that's what they did, so that they didn't have to turn people away. I did talk to Greg about, you know, next year, can we just open it back up to, you know, organize the fields, but not make people register, pre-register for it? Is that?
Yeah.
Because that was a, it was nice to account for the number of people, but the reason we did that before that way, I remember, was some of that was scandalous, we didn't, you know, we're outside of that for the most part of that. that for the most part now, at least.
And in the midst of that, that's a, yeah. Real quick, last thing is the microphone stuff, I just wanted to see if you mind, can you ask your ears now, the new system, you back?
Yeah, it's bad, it's a little, like, I think the mic's, they won't, they're not even starting.
I'm sure.
They still can't, they still can't hear the podium.
Some of the stuff he said we didn't hear, I had to ask.
You still can't hear the podium good though.
It's worse at the podium, but better on the, on the dais here.
If the mic's a little, a little, yeah.
We do those.
And Bob's, all the schools here.
I'm sorry, I, what, I think that's less.
I said, we can hear you and Bob real well, you know, with those obstacles, so I find it curious, but, you know, it's kind of, it.
Yeah.
Well, the other people, just need to put the mic above, both.
Yeah, I think we're going to need to remind people about pulling the mic. The other thing is, with the new system, make sure we can, we had a way to adjust the mic volume, on mics here individually, and that one for the podium, that gets turned up.
It still doesn't sound like it's coming in how it usually used to be at all.
But you can hear me talking right now, above the mic, okay.
Well, let's go ahead and give a motion there, closed session for contract negotiations. We got a second?
Second.
Motion of a second today discussion, seeing how it was ready to start, I suppose focused, we're in closed session.